Oh, I have my. Did you get that, Dave? I'm gonna start the meeting, alright? So.
Jay. Unmute, Jay.
There you go.
Alright, Granitas is running.
You gotta be on. You're good.
Alright.
Can you hear us?
Alright. Yes, I need this.
Okay, you're in. Good job, good job.
And John, are you also now? No, not, what is your message?
Yes, everything is being recorded. This whole thing, everything is being recorded. Everything is being recorded from the beginning of the time, okay? This is, everything has been recorded, okay?
When will it go public?
I'm gonna go public in one minute, okay? You all ready, Dave?
Are we supposed to see, um, I see deep right now in the Bahamas?
Yes, okay, so if you go to the top of your screen.
Are we supposed to see five different screens like we did before?
Yes, so if you go to the top, if you bring the cursor to the top of the screen and go to the right, you'll have your choice between gallery view or speaker view.
Go ahead.
And you wanna go to gallery view.
Say that again?
If you bring the cursor to the top right.
I'm using the tab, the tab that we have.
Oh.
So he's only gonna be able to see a couple of people?
Yeah.
So that's actually on the left side of the screen.
Okay.
You see switch camera, you see, you see switch, it says, "Switch to active speaker" or "Switch to gallery", you wanna be on gallery.
Mine doesn't say anything.
If you hit the top, um, left-hand corner of this screen.
See, I got you, I got you.
It says, "Switch to gallery".
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Alright, we're going live.
Hey, let's just say I'm not gonna give a tutorial.
Alright. One. Go. Alright, meeting calls on today is Tuesday, April twenty-first. Twenty twenty is now seven oh three PM. Town Council meeting for us to town of West Warren.
And Hawaii.
Councilman Lichardi?
Here.
Councilman Matt here.
Here.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Here.
Council Vice President D'Amico?
Here.
Council President Goslin?
Here.
There is a quorum. Discussion, action, vote of town council. Any matter on this portion of the agenda may be acted upon by way of topic discussion and action by the town council with a vote on the record to approve, amend, deny, or table the agenda item. One, discussion regarding and planning pertaining to addressing COVID-19 virus and the impact on town operations.
Um, before we move on, Ernie and Chief Ferrone, I was able to see who was in attendance on the right-hand side before. I don't have that ability, so I just wanna point that out.
Okay, you take care of that.
I can see it on my end.
Yeah, if you go up to participants and you hit participants and scroll down, there are fifteen attendees besides the panelists.
Nevermind, I got it, thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, Kristen Benoit is trying to come on, can she get on?
She's on.
He's on.
Can you hear me? Hi, Kristen.
Yeah, she's on.
We can't see you, but we can hear you.
That's okay.
Okay.
Okay, Ernie, do you wanna give us an update on COVID-19?
Yes, uh, at this point, I'm not sure what we work within, um, with this. Again, you know, we, you know, monitor, you know, the government press conferences. We have numerous conference calls throughout the week, usually two a day, one with the legal cities and towns. It talks about a lot of the issues that are affecting the various communities based upon COVID-19 and the restrictions that are being placed as far as the governors and executive orders and trying to implement them. As well as, you know, we have daily meeting, daily conference calls with state offices, the governor's office, department of health. We're trying to get the latest information. At this point, uh, we have the governors, executive orders, and things seem to be at some point where they are getting to a point where it's plateaued for a period of, I'm gonna go on the downward incline, but again, at the present time, we're not there. Uh, the Chief Ferrone is our emergency management director and is really doing a fantastic job of dealing with all the issues that come out. So many facets to what's going on. It's like, what you see is the top of the iceberg, but so many things going on with emergency management, uh, conference calls, trying to get as much of the personal protective equipment as we can for our public safety now or other employees who are in the, uh, the area where they need that, you know, for the office workers, those out in the field. So that's an ongoing event, trying to get that department going. Uh, as far as the operations for the town hall, these may be going very well. We have the appointments for recording. We're out looking at e-recording, which is something that would be helpful now and in the future. So that's something that we're now, uh, you know, most of our departments, you know, our buildings are closed in the fall. Getting accepted to the town hall. Blackberry means closed. Cedar Center means closed and seems to make sure that our elderly who need, uh, the meals, all those issues that are very important for the vulnerable members of the community are being met. So they're doing a fantastic job, so. Really, our departments are stepping up to do, you know, what they need to do to make sure that, as said, vulnerable members of the community are set, check on public safety, doing a great job responding to all the calls they need to and, you know, enforcement of the governors' executive orders. It's always something that is important to do. And, uh, they're doing a great job of that. Chief, do you have anything to add?
Uh, not at this time.
I don't think he's on, um, he was, oh, there he is.
Yeah, you have to unmute.
Jeff, unmute. Jeff, unmute.
I'm off that right now. That right now, thank you.
Ask the question again, Ernie.
Jeff, do you have anything, uh, anything to add as to the COVID-19 updates?
Not, not right at this time.
Jeff?
Must be having some technical difficulties.
Jeff, unmute. Jeff. Unmute. Jeff.
Okay. If I try to talk, there's gonna be a lot of feedback, so I really can't talk.
Okay.
Alright, thank you, Chief. Any questions for the town manager?
I, I do, Ernie. Um, I guess it's for all of us. We have taxes going, uh, you have until the end of May, correct, to pay the taxes?
May thirty-first. Property, uh, motor vehicles, you know, the real estate as well as sewer assessments and sewer usage.
Is, is there going to be, um, a possibility to extend that until mid-June or so? By the end of June? Or we, is this a firm date?
I, I would say it's a firm date because one of the items, one of the things we'll have to do is keep, uh, a breadth of cash flow, you know, it's checked regularly, daily. As the fiscal year comes to a close, you know, less, less general revenue comes in, so I believe it would be a issue of cash flow. So I would say that's a hard date, so that, uh, you know, that would be, you know, quite a bit of time for individuals.
Are we, so if, if people can't pay their, there's questions that've come up to me in the last couple of weeks, that's why I'm asking. If people can't make that May thirty-first date, are we still going to be charging them interest, given the situation and the economy?
Uh, at the present time, yes.
Okay.
Ernie, can we talk about, since we're on the impact of COVID-19 on town operations, what impact this has had on DBW operations as far as yard waste cleanup?
We have, we have an item later in the agenda, like, on this topic.
Is it in there later or instead?
Yeah, it's the last item of, um.
Tennessee.
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 Okay, very good.
Ernie, um, have, have the escrow payments come in as expected, uh, as far as taxes go?
Yes, uh, they came in, uh, yes, CoreLogic is a huge one that came in. All of the, uh, working companies have submitted their, uh, files, so we have all that. So that's in there right now.
So I assume as of right now, cash flow is okay?
Uh, yes, I was like, uh, Kristen wants us to, yes, right now it's okay.
If, if people have, are going to have, well, I know people are gonna have trouble, they've already, they've already mentioned it. If people have trouble paying their fourth quarter taxes, I, I don't wanna open up Pandora's box, but I, I know that's gonna happen. Are we gonna be willing to extend a hand and, and say they don't have to pay, absorb some of the interest payments?
Oh, I know, Kristen, if you wanted to answer that, but I believe the town has the authority to, you know, extend a payment date, but after the date that's due, then interest is due, and it might be statutorily difficult to waive that. Kristen, I know that one of the, one of the items that is going on as far as COVID-19 is there, so many, everyone's impacted by it, every business, person, industry, as well as governments. And there are many working groups that are looking at different things. You know, you have police, fire, EMA, finance directors, treasurers are, have a working group discuss issues like this as far as common problems. I think there's gonna be some common problems as we progress in this year. Kristen, do you wanna talk about cash flow and about payments, taxes, waiving interest, things of that nature?
You're on mute.
I'm mute, Chris.
Am I on mute?
Yes, you're good.
So there's been a lot of discussion on the finance director calls about this subject. There is a Rhode Island general law on the books that is raising concern about the municipality's actual lawful ability to extend and waive interest. So, um, we are looking into that, but right now, waiving interest till May thirty-first, I think is, is appropriate. Um, some municipalities aren't waiving at all. Um, our cash flow is, is good right now, but as we get, you know, into June and July, or July at least, we're, we're gonna need to get those payments in. And honestly, people are paying. People are coming to the door still, the lock boxes are heavy, people are dropping into the boxes. Um, we haven't heard, we haven't had a lot of complaints. More people are concerned about their check clearing than, than I have heard about, you know, not being able to make their payment. So I think that we need to take it, you know, wait till when we get closer to May thirty-first, reevaluate, see what's going on. But at this point, I wouldn't be comfortable with extending it past May thirty-first.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Just to keep this on the council's agenda each meeting to make a determination going forward, either a period of two weeks to four weeks, you know, determining on, if the cash flow is not a problem and taxes are still coming in, at least the council and manager can speak every couple of weeks on it to make a determination if they want to either attempt to waive interest or do something with the interest payments moving forward. I just also.
Clearly.
I'm sorry, Mary Beth, I, I just wanna make something clear also. Um, it, it's not affecting us now, but it's gonna affect us possibly later on in the year where a lot of these mortgage companies are deferring three months to six months of payment. What people are not realizing is if their escrow is also included in that for taxes and insurance, come next year, the people who have deferred that may see a uptick in their mortgage because they're gonna be short on their escrow for those three or six months. So, you know, everybody who's on here who's listening and plus anybody who on the council is thinking about doing it, just remember that if you might wanna bank escrow at least.
I think that's true, and I think what, what Kristen said is correct. I mean, if, this is changing, it's fluid, it's gonna continue to change, and we just need to keep track of it, and, and it should be on the agenda going forward until, till we have some resolution, I would agree.
Yeah, so Mary, I just make sure you put that on for the next, when's the next meeting? The first meeting in, uh, May, right? It's today, the twenty-first. And a bunch of people have asked me, and I think it's, it's been put out there, uh, on the town's website and also on social media, that there's plenty of ways that they can pay. Obviously, town hall is not open to make payments, but they can put it in the Dropbox, uh, they can mail it, they can also pay online. Um, there's one other way too, right?
ACH, they can sign up for ACH.
So there's multiple, so there's multiple ways that they can make payments.
We are getting a lot of payments, I mean, we sent, we send, um, when we get the mail, we see it, we send a lot of tax payments down, so people are paying their tax.
And Rose Silver also sent out, and thank you, Rose, for sending out that Q and A, because everybody who's asked me about how to pay their taxes, um, I have sent over that exact Q and A, and it clarified a lot for everybody. Thank you.
Wait, um.
Any other questions for Ernie on COVID-19? Thank you, Ernie.
Town Council acting as sewer commission bid award, contract extension for emergency generator preventative maintenance testing and repair services extension, contract number two thousand and seventeen dash fifteen, sponsored by Council President Goslin, recommendation of the superintendent and the sewer subcommittee of the West Warren Waste Water Treatment Facility, that the town council president be authorized to approve a one-year contact, contract extension for emergency generator preventive maintenance testing and repair services extension. Again, contract number two thousand and seventeen dash fifteen to generators M.D., Coventry, Rhode Island.
I'll move the resolution.
A second.
Second.
A second.
Discussion? Um, again, this is just extending our current generator contract, and, uh, that's something we need to have done. Any questions on that? I'm gonna take a roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Yeah, acting as sewer commission bid award solids handling facility upgrades, sponsored by Council President Goslin, recommendation by the superintendent of sewers in James J. Jeremiah and Associates Incorporated to award the bid for solids handling facility upgrades, contract number twenty twenty dash four, through Heart Engineering Corporation of Coventry, Rhode Island, in the amount of seven hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Second.
Um, Mary Beth, Jay, I'm not sure if anybody here is on this, um, from the sewer commission authority tonight. Do you guys have any, um, information on this?
Actually, Ernie, you asked for information from, uh, Jim, did you not?
Right. Jim?
I just, yeah, information.
I just saw new to Jim.
Oh.
He's got his hand up.
Hey, Jim.
Unmute him.
I will.
He might need to unmute himself.
Does that, does that work?
Jim? It does. Hi, Jim.
Good, um, this is an ongoing, uh, project. If you can recall back, almost a year ago, we designed, we, um, did the design for the dewatering operation. Right now, you have a centrifuge that is on its, um, it's, it's working well, but we need a backup. Uh, solids are an issue. Uh, taking liquid solids or liquid sludge from the facility to the incinerator, incinero, is about three times the actual cost of the centrifuge. Uh, so it's important that we get this online so that we can do our preventive maintenance on the unit that is currently in operation. This project will take about, um, it'll be done by the end, if you award it tonight, it'll be done by the year, on the end of this year, um, to get it up and running.
Thank you, Jim, any questions for Jim? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Jason? Jason?
Jason.
Sorry, I was on, I was on mute, sorry, yes, I was on mute, sorry.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Town Council acting as town council, resolution approving the collective bargaining agreement between the town of West Warren and Rhode Island Council ninety-four, APSME, AFL-CIO, on behalf of West Warren Town Employees Local two thousand and forty-five, July one, two thousand and nineteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Second.
Moving second, discussion. I will say, I wanna, I wanna thank the, uh, negotiating team on the behalf of all sides, the union side. Uh, it did take a little while for us to come up with this final contract, but, um, between the town council and the local union board, I think, uh, we got a lot of management rights back, um, and they worked very well with us over the last couple of months. And I, I definitely wanna thank Mary Beth, 'cause she's been, she's been doing from the very beginning of negotiations, and this was the longest one and the last one to finally get done. And, uh, thank you for your time and dedication, Mary Beth.
Oh, it, it was actually a team effort. There was a team from the town that worked together and, uh, with the union. We had Bill Dolan on it, and, uh, special thanks to Chief Williams, actually, who helped to mediate, uh, as we got towards the end. Ernie, I didn't know if you wanted to go over the memo, um, at all that was attached?
Well, uh, yes, we could, uh, discuss, you know, uh, some of those specifics, but I would like to say as well that, uh, you know, coming into, you know, this beginning of the fiscal year, we had, again, three contracts that were expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. And these, uh, were five-year contracts, which is very unusual, but based upon the fiscal condition at the time, in five-year contracts. So again, going in, certainly, we, you know, you know, as a town, you know, and, and the unions, we were together, had, uh, everyone had their positions and the unions, I mean, management, you know, passionate about their issues, uh, but we were very fortunate that we were able to include all three agreements. You know, the best agreements sometimes are the ones that no one likes, and, uh, but that's, I guess, a good thing. This agreement does a lot of things that was talked about. On the town side, we have some management rights that we should, uh, ability to, you know, not fill jobs, uh, which is most important as we go forward and we look at things that are happening in the future. When, you know, we have fiscal concerns going forward, uh, we have the right to review, to revise job descriptions, consultation, and, you know, those things are, you know, very important for the town. As well as we have the, um, ability to, uh, have our public works and recreation departments, uh, work interchangeably, uh, in those conditions as well as, you know, so that's a big plus for us because the last year has been very difficult because of a lot of staffing shortages. So as we move forward, uh, we have more flexibility as far as utilizing our employees in a more effective manner, which is gonna help provide services in public works and the recreation areas. So, you know, we're very, uh, pleased about that and looking forward to having a time when we're fully staffed, so we can provide the services that, you know, the public expects. Now, that's a good thing. And one of the other items that from the town standpoint, very important, was the fact that our civic center, uh, starting July first, will be, uh, a non-union facility. And the reason why that is important is, you know, unlike, you know, most of the general departments, government departments that we have, uh, the civic center is enterprise fund, like the wastewater treatment facility. You know, they're, in essence, a business. They have their customers, they have their revenues, expenses, and they need to have breakeven and hopefully show a little profit. And at times, it's very difficult when you have requirements for staffing and other things, uh, to run it as effectively as a business can. So that's very important for the town going forward, that, uh, the ability to staff it and function, function like, uh, you know, more of a business operation and consistent with some other, you know, communities functioning. Again, these facilities, which are slice arenas, swimming pools, others, if they can make money, great, but the expectation is you don't lose money and you can generate a small profit so that you can put it back into the facility for operations. These are community assets, you know, benefits for enjoyment of the residents of West Warren, the school department. So this is a great, great entity for the town to have. And hopefully, going forward, we can, at least breakeven and hopefully raise money. Again, uh, it's very important for us. And then on the, uh, and on the foot side, uh, you know, the benefit for the union is wages. And again, uh, as we knew going into these negotiations with all of our unions, you know, with contracts that have five-year contracts with three years and zero salaries plus wage reopens, you know, you know, contracts could be difficult. And I'd say that, you know, and all sides realize, you know, where the town was, where we are now. And I think it, at the end, uh, we have a better relationship with our unions to build on going forward, so. And I think, uh, we have been successful for many reasons. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that I can, or any questions that or the other member who will appreciate for me to answer.
Any questions from the council?
No, but I do, again, wanna thank everybody on the town side, everybody on the union side, uh, and, and Chief Williams. It was a long, it was a long, arduous task. We're already ten months into this contract. It actually started on July one, two thousand and nineteen. Uh, there'll be some, uh, retroactive pay, um, and some items that need to be addressed, and we will address them ASAP. Um, but all in all, I think, uh, I think you're right, Ernie. You said, and I know Chief Williams, when he started, said, uh, "We'll be successful if we walk out and neither side is completely happy." And that's probably true, that's probably where we landed, um, but I think we're in a far better situation.
Can I, uh, bring up, I know we're gonna be, sorry, you go first, Jason.
No, go ahead.
Um, so I know we're gonna be going more into the yard waste later on, but I know that, that starting on July first, um, yard waste will, will be going over to a private company. Um, is there any details you can give now about how that's gonna work for anybody that may be watching?
Right, uh, in fact, uh, the, the agreement we have, and I'll just give you a little background, uh, we are at the conclusion of a five-year agreement with our. a little background, uh, we are at the conclusion of a five-year agreement with our solid waste and recycling provider, Mega, uh, Limited. So they are going to continue on with the solid waste and recycling. This year, they're going to be adding yard waste. I believe it's twenty-six weeks, um, yard waste pickup that the town can decide where that is. So the town, so they will be doing that effectively when the contract starts. We had asked them if they could do it before the contract started. Uh, they're, they're doing that. So they'll do it, be doing that in conjunction with homeowners' regular solid waste schedule. A lot more details with this, uh, you know, as we go. And, uh, but again, that, and again, the plus side of that is, and again, that had been, uh, you know, union work. And the plus side of that is, cause that's gonna allow our departments to focus on items that we haven't been able to get to, because, you know, yard waste takes a lot of time, so we'll be able to focus on, you know, uh, some construction projects, a lot of drainage issues, collapsed drains, things like that. But, uh, they're gonna be coming in and then we'll be working with the town as we develop the contract for this twenty-six week, you know, I think it's twenty-six weeks.
But I think an important thing to note too is, and I know you don't have, you don't, you're gonna have more details as we go along, but once that happens, people will have a set day where they'll put it out, pretty much it'll be the day that they pick up their trash and recycling, and it won't be now where we're not sure which day or which week it's gonna come out there, so it'll definitely be beneficial to both sides.
Oh, definitely. Once, yeah, once, once that starts, yeah, you'll have your regular pickup day, it'll be done. You know, so, uh, you, you know, sometimes, you know, in a municipal setting, you know, you get diverted for something happens or, you know, things may happen, but, uh, you know, this is, uh, it's, it's gonna be like this always. It's gonna get done at a different time, and, uh, every time, and if there is a miss, we're gonna call up, uh, just like we do for recycling, and they'll come back and pick it up, so. We'll be, have that sense of certainty, uh, that will be provided for the homeowners, and, uh, and at the same time, uh, more flexibility, so they, we will see, you know, a little more projects being built by our town resources.
When, when is this going to start? What is your proj- projected date?
Uh, well, the contract will be July first, so that would be the effective date of the contract.
Okay, so Mega will start picking up July first. The, their twenty-six weeks, is that, um, July first through June thirtieth, or is it calendar year?
I think that's, that, uh, would be up to the town, you know, and those are details. It'll be twenty-six weeks.
So we can set, we can set the twenty-six weeks?
Yes, I think the town can work with them to decide. Maybe it might be earlier, you know, maybe one part of the year, if everyone's getting their years out, have a little lull time and maybe more in the fall, so the schedule will be.
We can, so we can have further discussions than possible, when we get closer to that, of kinda setting a schedule where maybe certain times of the year, it's every week, and other times, it's maybe, uh, every other week, and then of course, when you get to certain times of the year, there won't be pickups at all. Thank you, Ernie.
Uh, are we gonna be discussing yard waste more in this meeting down the line?
Yes.
All right, I'll wait.
Minutes of the previous meeting of.
Wait, 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 wait.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Wait.
Any other comments on the, uh, contract or questions for Ernie?
No.
Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. John?
Sorry.
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Can I vote?
I apologize. Minutes of the previous meeting, approval of the minutes of April seven, twenty twenty, Town Council meeting.
Resolution?
I second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. John? Jay?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Can I vote yes?
All right, um, license applications, hold on one second, I gotta get there. Um, license applications. Resolved that the consent agenda having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed of or awaiting recommendation, the same is hereby approved.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Any public discussion? If you have public discussion, please raise your hand, and I will allow you to talk. I'll give it a minute, just so I can see if it pops up. Chief, is there anybody on your end putting their hand up? I don't see any.
I do not see anyone.
I do not see anyone either.
Okay, with that being said, roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Can I vote yes?
Okay, ordinance twenty twenty dash two, first reading sponsored by Council President Goslin, an ordinance amending Article One, Section twelve-four, public intoxication, and Section twelve dash four-one, consumption and possession of alcohol in public of the Code, Code of Ordinances of the Town of West Warwick.
I will move the ordinance.
I second.
Moving second, Al, how are you doing tonight?
Good. Uh, this, this ordinance was passed by the, uh, now, this ordinance was requested by Council President Dave. We previously have had on the books for a long period of time, an ordinance regulating smoking in town-owned property and town-owned motor vehicles. What has happened is since that ordinance was passed, uh, we now have a whole new area of vaping or whatever else they call it, of smoking things other than cigarettes and cigars. Uh, at Dave's request, I drafted, uh, an amendment to the ordinance, which includes all of those, those new types of smoking. I don't know how else to explain it. The, uh, yes, we're on the wrong ordinance.
Do we skip one?
Yeah, we're on public intoxication now. Oh, okay, sorry. Uh, public intoxication, public intoxication, that was passed for, uh, the first reading, and then it was, uh, tabled, because Council President David got a, uh, call from somebody, uh, got a call from somebody wondering what the, uh, the effect of that ordinance was. Uh, Dave put me in touch with a gentleman. I spoke in length with him. His concern was that a number of years ago, he had a friend who had a drinking problem. The friend was intoxicated, I believe, in Aric. When three West Warwick police saw him, they went to him, they talked to him, and with his consent, they brought him to the hospital. That was the beginning of his road to becoming a recovering alcoholic. This gentleman who I spoke with was concerned that this ordinance would prohibit the police from offering that kind of service, where they were doing good, and he was afraid that the ordinance would stop that. I explained to him that all this ordinance did was it prohibited these, the police from arresting that particular gentleman, and that that was because that's the new state law. Once he realized that the police could still go out and offer help, and they were only prohibited from making arrests, he was satisfied. So with that, I would request that the council give a second reading approval. It brings it in line with the state statute. Actually, this is on for a first reading.
I was gonna say, this is first reading.
We actually, it's the first time, um, and again.
So we need a.
All the issue, it was, it was passed the first time.
Yeah, I, I feel like we've, this is definitely not the first time we've talked about.
I, I can, I can get the date for you if you give me. The agenda just indicates it's a first reading, so my suggestion would be it's treated as a first reading, and then in a couple of weeks, uh, uh, if the council passes it, then everything can proceed accordingly.
What, what does this do to the police department, though? How, how does Chief not feel about this? Is he on?
He's on board with him on.
So I, I concur with Attorney DeFiori to, to bring us in line with state law, um, which essentially, state law prohibits municipalities from doing the municipal ordinance the way ours was currently constructed, because it, it offered a penalty of potential jail, and in our municipal court, we don't have public defenders on staff. So we have other mechanisms through state statute if we need to go the law enforcement route, uh, to put somebody in custody for their behavior, but we're much more inclined as a community caretaker, uh, function to get people assistance as a, as a medical need, um, in the alcohol-type scenarios, so I had no problem with this.
So my only question.
We saw somebody.
Mike.
Hold on. Uh.
Mary Beth?
Am I good?
No, Jason, go ahead, Jason.
All right.
You sure?
Yep.
Yes, sure.
Hello? So, all right, so I'm, I'm just, I'm just curious, so if you see, if you see someone on the street and they look like they're having an issue, and the police come up and they feel that they're intoxicated, do you have, now, do you have? From possibly harming himself or harming other people?
So a part of you cut out, caught in that conversation, but, uh, again, we're, our community caretaking function is, is the much more important one. If we think somebody cannot care for themselves, uh, we're gonna assist them in getting medical treatment. That's our first priority. If someone crosses the line with criminal behavior and that's the route that they're earning, um, then we'll do what we need to do with district court, whether that involves a summons to go to court to a later date and get their medical treatment first, or if they've earned their way to go to court within hours, then we'll handle that.
So, so either way, though, if there's an issue, you, you guys, um, the police still can take care of the issue, it's just a matter of what direction you're going to take?
Absolutely.
Also, Jason, what this, what the ordinance does is now it mimics the state law, as opposed to being off in a, in a direction of the state law said it could not be.
Okay. Thank you.
Could we, is there any issue if, if indeed we did table this previously, or is this considered a whole new, a, a whole new ordinance?
I would say because of the time, the time lapse between the first time it was on the agenda and the fact that it was posted for a first reading tonight, uh, I would just suggest that keep tonight as the first reading, and then in two weeks, do the second reading, and you should be all set. I mean, a delay of two weeks, it's already been delayed from the initial time it was on the council's agenda for probably three months, so an additional two weeks isn't gonna hurt anything. I have no problem with that.
Um, any public comment on that matter? I don't see any, so I'll take a roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Can I vote yes?
Ordinance twenty twenty dash six, first reading sponsored by Council President Goslin, and ordinance amending Chapter twelve, offenses miscellaneous, Article one in general, Section twelve, smoking in public buildings on public properties and vehicles owned by the town of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of West Warwick.
Move the ordinance.
I second.
Okay, I'll, I'll try again. Uh, basically, this takes the ordinance that's been on, like, it's a long period of time, and it adds to it all of the new types of smoking, vaping, whatever you call it. Uh, the group from the high school, I can't think of the, uh, the woman's name, but, uh, they reviewed it, and, uh, Kimberly Maine, I think, they're all in favor of it. I've, uh, gone over it with David, uh, who suggested it, and basically, we're just, once again, bringing our ordinances in line with today's, what's going on today.
So I just wanna add to that, um, as you know, um, we've, we've been working, I've been working with, and the council's been working with the students of West Warwick, um, against, uh, students, against destructive decisions, and they've had some children graduate last year, and new, new people have taken over new roles in that, on that group, and Kimberly Maine has worked very close with them and us, and they have come to us before to change these ordinances, and, um, one thing that they noticed that was not in the ordinance is. Everything else out, drew this back up, and, uh, we sent it over to them, and they worked through it, um, they also worked with a, uh, lady from the state who does, deals with a lot of this, and they thought it was an excellent ordinance, and West Warwick is actually one, is considered one of the best, um, places in West Warwick, providing tobacco and vape products and whatever, and they're also, they were supposed to be at the meeting before all this actually started, um, and so they wanted to be on, they wanted to be there to speak on this item. They're also, along with this, they're also looking to, and they're gonna pay for the signs, um, and post the signs throughout the playgrounds and parks of West Warwick and, like, the track, and they're working with Don Ulette right now and Tracy to get those signs ordered, and, um, it'll have not just smoking, but vaping and, you know, that's covered.
David, David, on that point that you just raised about, uh, us being a leader in it, when I get into a project like this one, I frequently will go to looking for guidance from what other communities are doing, and I have to say that in this particular instance, my search did not give me much help, because I, I could not find any communities that were what I refer to as being on the forefront of the issue as far as our ordinances across the border.
Is, is this going to be something that we're enforcing, or what you're saying, um, you shouldn't do this?
Well, it's, no, you're not, you've never been allowed to smoke on public property, and this is just adding the new methods of smoking, like any other place, uh, Jay, you know, you can't smoke in public buildings.
Yeah, but just to add to the ordinance, Jay, that it was already in place, um, so for, for instance, if you're at a park or playground and you're smoking there, um, it is enforced, um, or it can be enforced. It's the same thing now with vaping and everything else. We don't want that around the children's playgrounds.
Okay.
Any other comment on that? Any public comment? Not seeing any, so I'll take a roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Can I vote yes?
Thank you.
Okay, resolution to Rhode Island Senate regarding. Regarding zoning laws sponsored by Council President Gosman.
Resolution?
Second. The background to this is that when the zoning codes across the state were created, the, each zoning code has what is commonly referred to as a table of uses, and in those tables, it spells out the uses made of property. Uh, it distinguishes what particular uses are permitted in the different zones. It states what permission, what particular uses are prohibited, and what particular uses, uh, are allowed through a special use permit from the zoning board. What happened was if you, the IUs, for example, uh, code was created in August of nineteen sixty-five, well, since August of nineteen sixty-five, uses of property have come into existence that did not exist in nineteen sixty-five, and I think in the tech, uh, the IT world, very obvious. So if we had a business in, across the state, and a, usually a business, that wanted to come into town, but that particular use did not exist in nineteen sixty-five, they weren't allowed. They would have to go through the whole process of going to the planning board for recommendation, to the council, go through the process of the, the council amending Of the council amending the zoning board, then go back to the planning and the zoning board for approval to put that use into place. Over the course of time, a number of communities, at least seventeen that I'm aware of. Passed uh amendments to this zoning code that set up a procedure that uh made this a lot easier. So what we did several years ago, and I don't know how many years ago, but seven years ago. The council, uh, though, my opinion, the wisdom, to put in place that a provision where it says that if somebody comes into our town. And they got a use that everybody wants to see in our town, they go to the planning board, the planning board makes a favorable recommendation to the zoning board. The zoning board says, gee, that's a great idea. And then they issue a special use permit and they get it, get it uh done with. The town of Portsmouth had a similar provision. Uh, they granted a use that did not exist when their zoning uh ordinance was created. An objective brought it to the Supreme Court. And the Supreme Court ruled that the town did not have the right to change the ordinance that way. But the only way you could do that was to go through that whole change of ordinance procedure that I mentioned a little while ago. The town of Portsmouth asked the Supreme Court to review it. Supreme Court said, no, the uh, they weren't gonna bother to review it. So the Senate, which will allow the communities to put in place ordinances like we have and like sixteen other communities, seventeen out of the thirty nine that I know of. Have making it possible and easier for people to come in to the towns and cities with uh with businesses that just did not exist in nineteen sixty five. And not have to spend a ton of dough and a long process to get approval of it. Uh, I received an email from the uh town solicitor from uh Portsmouth. Requesting that I go to the go to the town council and ask you to uh send a resolution to the Senate uh back in this this bill. Uh, naturally sent it to all seventeen communities, I don't know how many have responded. But I feel very strongly that it was something that our town council took action on a number of years ago. To help the business in the town, to bring in businesses that just did not exist uh in sixty five. That our planning board thinks is good, that our zoning board thinks is good. Without forcing on those particular actions against a lot of expense and time. So I am strongly urging the council to uh accept this resolution. And forward it on to the various state officials that are listed in it. And to back the town of Portsmouth in trying to get this, what I'll call an archaics. To to feel that if a business that exists today did not exist in nineteen sixty five, can't come into town without a whole long expensive process, I think is wrong.
This makes a lot of sense. It certainly makes the process a lot easier for the applicant.
Any other questions for Al or comment?
No, uh, actually, I was wondering, Al, did we actually reach out to uh the uh representatives from West Warwick? Uh, the the senators from West Warwick uh to discuss this with them?
I did not.
So we don't know if they're in favor of that?
Council, council, but normally if the town council passes a resolution, then the clerk will forward it to the uh representative and the senators from West Warwick. And then at that, at least they know what the council's position is on that particular bill.
The the resolution itself lists, uh, this is a resolution that was primarily sponsored by the uh town of Portsmouth. And it's my guess that the town of Portsmouth was probably the moving factor in getting the bill going. And it's the the uh resolution itself specifies a number of people, I believe, uh, representatives and senators are included, who gets notice of it.
So I, yeah, I don't have objection. I think probably in the future, we should get their their uh let them weigh in as well before we we act. But it sounds like it's uh it will make things life life easier for people.
Well, I I think the fact that seventeen out of thirty nine communities, seventeen that I know of, have so fit to do this. Uh, speaks speaks well a lot.
Any other question or comment? Hearing on, I'll take a roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Night vote yes.
Thank you, and I will notify the attorney from Portsmouth that we joined on.
Al, thank you for attending tonight, um, and the conversation. I didn't think, and you didn't think you'd ever have to do a council meeting from Florida via meeting, so.
No, like I, like I said to you, I didn't think at eighty years old, the highlight of my day would be putting stamps in a stamp album. Thank you, Al.
Al's gonna get spoiled and wanna start doing that every meeting I meet.
We'll put you up on the big screen, Al.
Discussion action, discussion regarding FY twenty twenty one budget workshop, public hearings and messaging sponsored by Councilwoman Williamson.
Yeah, I just wanted to have this on the agenda. Um, I it is budget season, I know that's not on top of everybody's uh mind, but um. Ernie has indeed put together his version, we we got the department version back in January. We've seen Ernie's um version of uh what he thinks the budget should look like. I just don't think that I uh, I believe that we can very easily through this method, Zoom. Um, have public workshops and move this process along, so we don't have to start from square one. When indeed restrictions are lifted and we can meet. Um, I I believe it's even uh, we we've gotten used to it enough that there's uh. Enough flexibility that we can actually even do public hearings via this. So I I would suggest that we we set some dates to do the workshops um and public hearings. So when indeed, and I know, Ernie, you've had conversations, we're not even sure what the financial town meeting looks like, what what the rules will be. But at least we'll be ready to go when indeed some uh we have some direction.
We need to get this moving.
Uh, yes, uh, the uh certainly now that we have this streaming capability, you know, the departmental hearings, budget reviews can be conducted. A public hearing can be held on whatever, you know, changes uh are made at that level. And that can be moved going forward. And then once we know maybe a little bit more than how. Maybe another workshop for any changes in the second public, move to the next level. They said it's uh difficult now that the two issues that are out there for uh. The communities that have budget referendums and financial town meetings that approve budgets are. And how does that work right now with social distancing? And what uh what would that look like and what could be done? And there are limited options right now. And you know, you know, in a few weeks, month, uh, if things go according to what we believe and what the governor believes. The restrictions are gonna be lessened, so that we'll have a better picture. Clearly, uh, budget hearings can be, departmental hearings can be done, conducted, a public hearing can be done versus Zoom platform. And by then, we'll see where we are with the uh, you know, with the uh. Social distancing regulations. And talking about just another concern is, you know, the General Assembly hasn't met. And most, not all communities are very concerned about what is the state revenues going to look like in FY twenty one. Before all this happened, there was a deficit in the budget that the governor had a proposal for. And. And she recommended her version. And at that point, then, the restriction to put on in General Assembly hasn't met. Now, the governor built her budget based upon projections that were made in revenue, I think in November. The November revenue estimating conference, it's gonna be a revenue estimating conference in early May. And that's gonna be a completely different issue. And uh, it's gonna be uh a lot of less revenue for the state to close the fiscal year and the town as well, against some of those revenues. So the landscape as to what the state may may look like is very disconcerting to most city towns. So how do you build a budget based upon that? So as we go forward, there may be a little bit more clarity as the restrictions lessen and the General Assembly can meet. And see what what they believe is going to happen. Been a lot of uncertainty out there, but and measures, as you indicated, measures can be taken to move the process along. So as things become maybe a little clearer, it'll be a position to move forward. Now, one of the items that has been discussed with the legal cities and towns has been. You know, with the cha- charter requirements and statutory requirements as to dates and so on. From uh the legal cities and towns and the meetings that, you know, we've been on. It seems that there's a general consensus that the executive, the declaration of an emergency and the executive authority. Granted into the chief administrative officer, as well as the legislative body can extend dates. So, you know, the dates in the charter can be extended for the budget approvals. So that's a good thing and that that we'll work on that as well as we have the dates uh set. That's something that's coming up. You know, uh, as I said, the revenues are the biggest concern at. At the budgets, I mean, the charter allows us, and most communities can. You know, if there's no budget by July first, you can extend your spending based upon the prior year's budget. Uh, there is no mechanism to raise revenues. So that becomes an issue. Uh, that's our our reserves. So, you know, if we can, we're in a position to adopt the budget, that's a good thing. But, you know, again, there is a lot of uncertainty out there as to what budget that can kind of look like. And what revenues do you use and what estimates yourself can use. And sort of, you know, going down a little bit, but to answer your question, back full circle, yes, there's no reason why we cannot have. These departmental hearings and a uh a budget hearing with public comments.
I I mean, if I may make a suggestion, considering now, I know most of our evenings are a little more free than definitely they would have been a month ago. Maybe we could set some dates next week to at least begin the process and get it get it started.
I I mean, I I don't see a.
I think Mary Mary Beth looks like she's trying to talk, but she's unmute.
Hold on, Mary Beth, hold on one second.
You're mute.
I unmuted.
Yeah, you 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 muted me, that's a uh, yes, I I get the head, David, yes. A lot of people wanna do that. Um, there there's no doubt about the fact that we don't know what what the state's gonna do, they don't have a budget. Um, and I think we can pretty much rely on the fact that that there will be a cut in aid coming to us from the state than what we will get from the state. However, we can at least go through the budgets, look at what the departments are looking for, asking for, what your thoughts are, get that squared away. And if the, at the end of the day, the state comes down and says, hmm, you know what, there's gonna be a thirty percent cut across the board, then we'll have to deal with that and figure out how we come up with that. But I agree, um, I think it was you, Jason, that just said, let's get them going now. Um, let's have those those budget hearings, I would not schedule them all for one night, I don't think, but.
No, 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 at least.
Uh, I.
At least start.
Yep. I I absolutely, I think we should get them out of the way, and I think we can have the public hearings. The workshops are 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 no brainer, but I think we can have the public hearings as well.
Can I say one thing, and I don't mean to interrupt, but we are now in the midst of the June second presidential preference primary. And next week, we estimate we will have between in the next ten to fourteen days, between three, four thousand mail ballots coming through our office. If we could do it after the next two weeks, I don't care if we do it before June second and start them. But it's gonna be insanity in the office in the next two weeks as the um all mail ballots have been going out as of today, what's today, Tuesday, as of yesterday. So in the next week or so, in the next ten days, everything is gonna be coming back to our office to do all of that. So whatever you're doing, if you can just get past the the next ten days and start planning from there. Because then we'll have a little lag between then and the June second um la- election.
So, Mary Ann?
Yes.
What does the general election or the primary election have to do with the budget? Because we meet at six o'clock at night, we don't meet from eight to four.
I get what you're saying, all I'm saying is that I'm not sure what's gonna happen because this is sort of unprecedented. So I'm not sure what will happen, and I I I get what you're saying, this doesn't have anything to do with you. Except I'm not sure what will happen in the next ten days. And, well, actually, you know what, just plan it for, planning the way you want to. Because I'm just a a little concerned that that might be something that could um hold up the functions in our office. Cause of we, it's unprecedented what's going on right now. But you know what, plan your, plan whenever you need to plan. I was just thinking that we we may be um over so overwhelmed that it won't be all we're thinking about for ten, the next ten days.
So so I I think that that makes, I I I understand, and you certainly don't know what's gonna happen, Mary Ann. But um actually, your involvement in the workshops, other than when you are um to present yours or to discuss yours, I I think is fairly limited, is it not?
Hosting the meetings.
Yeah, that's what I I just said, the more I think about it, just go forward. I I just was thinking about this, it's gonna be a little bit insanity, but as far as where I'll spend my time, it will be for for the town council. So that's, yes, it, it won't, it won't be on the election, I'll I'll make sure of that.
Kristen, you had something?
Yeah, we just need to revisit the advertising, I think we we still need to advertise.
Right.
These, so we may need, just take a look at how how quickly that they're gonna be able to get it in the paper, so that we can then, you know, kind of backtrack to pick our dates.
And I figured like so for our um, the advertising, like if we were just gonna have our first workshop, is the advertising for the workshops? Just the standard advertising like a town council meeting, or is that something again that needs to be advertised in the newspaper as well?
Workshops go in the paper.
Gotcha, okay, not not just the public hearings, the workshops too, and how how so that it might even be too soon to do it next week? It might have to be the following week, or it depends?
No.
I don't know how quickly, I don't know how long that takes.
Well, if you give me dates, I can reach out to the paper tomorrow and find out when they can get them in.
How about next Tuesday, we do at least a workshop, like the first one? I don't know if that works for the rest of you guys.
I I would say, yeah, I would even say Tuesday and Wednesday, if we could do them in consecutive days and get get them out of the out of the way, that would be a great idea.
I could just advertise it on one ad too. Um, and then I'll just kind of split the departments, kind of like I did originally, have them, and then the way we first advertised it, where is that?
That's it.
That should be fine.
I would do, I would agree.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, and and again, like there, like you you said, Mary Beth, there's gonna be certain things that and in variables, we don't know because of the state. And, you know, the the things that we need to skip back and go back over, that's fine, but there's gonna be a lot of things we could at least kind of check off, you know?
I I would agree. And 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 Kristen, tell me about the, tell me about the timing following up with with advertising for the public meetings, public hearings.
The public hearings, there's a little bit more stringent guidelines on that, I believe it has to be advertised three times, Mary Ann, for the public hearings?
Yeah, it it for not the workshops, for the public hearings, so you can do that, yeah, three times, yeah.
That's what I thought, yeah.
So can you, Kristen, can you?
Workshops are just meetings, so we can do those next Tuesday and Wednesday. Um, and uh, then for the public hearings, as long as, maybe we can set this dates tonight.
Can I, can I make, can I make a suggestion which might be a little less confusing?
Yep.
Bernie and Mary Ann put together the timeframe of what's required under the charter, with the exception of it's not gonna be done by then. That can give you an idea of where you guys are gonna be, say, in the next 20 days. Fixing all the dates for advertisement, making sure that public hearings are properly notified, making sure the workshops are properly advertised. And then, whatever dates that the council agrees upon, Bernie, you can just send a letter to all the bodies, from the treasurer, Division of Revenue, Order of the General, General Assembly, and the executive branch, saying, listen, this is what the Town of West Warren is doing. You're following the charter as much as you can. However, because of COVID-19, you're not gonna be right on with the dates. That way, at least, instead of trying to do it haphazardly, everybody would have the dates in front of them. You could decide when you want to have the workshops, you can decide when you want to have the hearings. Then you also can then advise Kristen as the one to do the advertising.
Well, Tim, do, I mean, I think Kristen has a perfect handle on it, but do we need to run it by the town council, like her dates? She knows what dates. I mean, we can say next Tuesday, Wednesday for workshops. And then, if we set the public hearings tonight as well, Kristen has a perfect handle on what needs to be done as far as the advertising and whatnot. Do we set them all tonight?
Well, to tell you the truth, if you wanted to set them tonight, the only question I would have is, that wasn't specific on your agenda.
Okay, okay, got you.
I'd object to it.
Well.
But the fact remains that because there are dates certain involved in the whole charter that we know are not gonna be met, I would just make sure that all the parties that I just mentioned were notified as to what the town's doing. And then the town internally, Kristen, if you want to put forth, say, the next 15 days, what the council can and cannot do regarding workshops, and also then having the advertised, the two meetings that are required under the charter, I'm sorry, three.
Yeah, I.
Here, here, sorry.
So, Tim, I guess I wonder, what dates are we not adhering to from the charter? The only date certain in the charter, I think, is the May date, which is the Financial Town Meeting. And we know we're not gonna be able to do that.
Right.
So, we're trying to get everything done up until that point.
Right. If you take the third Tuesday in May as when you normally would have your Financial Town Meeting, work off of that, however, getting rid of the May date, just take your next 30 days. If the council can determine by use of the Zoom system or whatever technology that you can conduct these.
Absolutely.
Hearings and also workshops, along with the general public, then everyone is gonna be on the same page as far as general public, state government, town government, school committee, everyone, they're gonna know what's happening. And then, the advertisement by Kristen, I mean, if that could all be done pursuant to the charter, because it says, notice of the hearing shall be advertised on at least three separate days in the newspaper or general circulation. You might want to, you might want to try to waive, get a waiver for that. Or, if it can be done, it can be done.
The town, the state is still doing disclosure, like, we're still gonna have to follow those steps. The unanswered questions right now are the Financial Town Meeting and the voter referendum. And we're having a, we're having a meeting with the League on Thursday, a Zoom meeting to discuss ideas and get some ideas together for Brian from the League to go to the state administration with, so that we can start getting some guidance on how we can hold them.
And that's this Thursday?
Yes, it's a conference call.
Yeah. So, I don't think there's, I don't think we need to complicate and get the state involved in the workshops and the public hearings. So, I think we should go ahead.
Put them on notice.
Oh, excuse me, the state doesn't know that, because the legal cities and towns, on behalf of its members, and especially those in communities that have referendums and send correspondence to the governor's office, advising them of these issues of meeting deadlines with the, versus technology that wasn't there. So, all the issues that we have have been relayed to the governor's office. They're working with the legal cities and towns and municipalities, and we expect some guidance from them at some point in the future as to their position on these issues. And from what the discussions have had with the League and the League and, you know, consulting with their members' attorneys, the general consensus is by the executive authority that is granted to the governor and granted to the municipality, which mirrors the governor's authority. With the approval of the council, these internal deadlines can be moved. Like, that's always interpretation, but, you know, but that's what most communities believe with the declaration of emergency. And the issues that have been raised, have been raised, have been raised at the governor's office. And that, by the fact that it has gone to the governor, they're looking at different possibilities of relief, some of these issues, the timing. So, we expect something coming back from that. So, they are fully aware of the issues that are confronting the cities and towns. Some have supposed to be before us, a little bit, they are not even moved yet because of these uncertainties. So, that's the question. I think the state's well aware of what issues the towns and cities have with referendums. And the fact that it's forward with, you know, these internal items, the funding, the rectors' hearings, the public hearings to give you points, you know, to get into public's point of final decision from the council. And when it really becomes critical is how do you hold referendums when, under, you know, the social distancing requirements, as well as the Financial Town Meeting? No one knows how to do that.
Right, and that's an answer that we'll have to get. But I would, I would recommend, and I've heard next Tuesday and Wednesday, why don't we, why don't we try to go ahead and schedule the workshops for Tuesday and Wednesday? And in my mind, public hearings, assuming that there's no, nothing that comes up in the workshops, maybe the following week, as long as the advertising can get done.
Right. So, let me, let me do some, some follow-up on that tomorrow. Kind of work out a timeline for myself and make sure it all works logistically. And then I can just reach out to you guys.
Perfect.
Instead of, you know, just letting you all know.
Thank you, Kristen.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Good?
Hold on. Any other comment on the budget workshops? Thank you.
So, Kristen, you'll let us, you have to publish the public hearings. So, you'll let my office or everyone know the following, you'll be the public hearings, you'll get them done three times, and we'll just plan them from, then you'll let me know the dates, so.
I'll work with you, well, I'll chat with you about it tomorrow.
Okay.
But the workshops, we definitely want to do Tuesday and Wednesday next week, correct?
Absolutely, 28th and 29th.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Fourth supplemental emergency declaration, declaration of state of emergency extension, sponsored by Town Manager.
Yes, the current declaration of the state of emergency in the Town of West Warren will be expiring on Thursday, April 30th. So, it needs to be extended. The recommendation would be to extend it until Thursday, June 4th. The 30th is on a Thursday, by regulations, it's a seven-day period cycle. So, if you look at the calendar, you know, on the 30th, the meetings who are made, the regular meetings, would be Tuesday, the 5th, and then the 19th. So, then, if we had it earlier, we just have to come back, you know, on the 19th to extend it a further time. So, clearly, we will, we will still be, but I will still be in a state of emergency on June 4th. That's gonna last quite a while. And it just takes care of that. So, if there is another extension, it can be done the first meeting in June. Same parameters, if for some reason that it is lifted, it can be lifted by the Town Manager or the council. But it is important to have a parallel executive level to issue emergency declarations in case really something does happen that requires adaptation from the state.
Actually, Bernie, so you picked June 4th, and I understand the Thursday part of it. The governor has a stay-at-home order until May 8th. I actually don't know when her next, I thought maybe the 15th, because her executive order expires. Is that true?
I believe, I believe so. And I'm sure.
What, is, is there any reason that we would, we would extend beyond what she, what the state is doing at this point? I agree with you, in all likelihood, it will, but I'm just not sure why we would go up to the 4th?
It is basically.
Maybe go to the 5th?
Well, you know, I can say that, you know, with almost a surety that, you know, that will be extended, no question about that, because the ability to come down after the peak is gonna take a while. The governor's gonna need the executive authority to ratchet down. And clearly, it could be to an earlier time. You know, it just seemed like this would be sufficient time to get us through, you know, the month of May. And then, the first meeting, June 4th, which we have a meeting in the first Tuesday in June, could be altered, quite frankly, probably going forward for one time. Clearly, if the council wishes and you must update it, that's certainly a prerogative.
Bernie, I'm quite certain, I heard that even though the governor is expiring, the, her executive order is expiring on the 15th, I thought, as Mary Beth said. I also heard today that they're putting a COVID-19 committee together for the legislators to be involved, because they, for some reason, they want to be involved with the orders also. So, I think you're right, I think it's gonna be extended. But, again, June 1st isn't a bad date. And like you said, I think the council, if things start clearing up, we can always have a meeting to, we're gonna have two meetings in May anyway, we can pull that executive order away. I would be more than happy to come to the town hall if this clears up before then and take that order off if that happens.
You never thought you'd say that, did you, Jason?
No, I didn't. I miss getting yelled at in town council chambers.
The meeting's not over. The meeting's not over.
Could we take a vote on this?
Has it in for discussion, action? It's actually not a vote.
Well, action, does, under action, does it allow that? Extending the emergency, state of emergency?
I would think you could direct, you could direct the manager to follow along with the governor's doing. And in the event that things change as of Friday, May 15th, or May 17th, that can be addressed at the first meeting in May. So, I think you've let the manager know what your feelings on this. I don't think it requires a vote.
I think, I mean.
But the current, yeah, the current one expires on April 30th, though.
Right, but you allowed your chief, not executive officer, I already forgot, but chief operational officer to already address this concern. All you're doing is allowing him to extend it based upon what the governor has said. And then, in the event that things change, you can address it in your first meeting in May. So, I mean.
So, basically, Bernie can do this on his own.
I don't think it matters if there's a vote. You can make the recommendation from what your statements are to your manager. But if you want to take the vote, there's gonna be anyone to go and check to it based upon the COVID-19 amendments to the OLA.
All right, that's, again, that seems to be confusing the way it's worded, just, if the date is sooner than that, it's fine. Because, again, the way this started, the manager could, the executive officer could declare an emergency. If in seven days, the council had to agree with that.
Right.
And if we extend, it would be my read, it's not my area, that when it is extended, the council would have to agree to an extension as well.
But again, based upon how the Town of West Warren is mirroring, mirror, excuse me, what the state of Rhode Island is doing, and you are, again, the executive officer. To me, it doesn't make a difference whether or not the town makes a recommendation to you or if they take a vote right now. I just question the need for a vote.
So, if we follow the governor's rule, and she's set until May 15th, so if we extend this, Bernie.
You're under the, anyway, that's what.
Our next.
You would see the municipal rule, anyway.
Okay. But our next meeting will be on the 19th, anyway.
No, your next meeting will be the first Tuesday in May.
Yeah, the first Tuesday in May.
It'll be May 5th.
And seco de mayo.
Yeah, hey.
Right now? So, if they're on May, if it's on May 5th and things are still consistent like they are now, then really, nothing's going to change?
Right. And you can discuss the June, you can discuss the June.
So, on the 5th?
What's the meeting again? Sorry, it's June 4th date again.
At the, at the May 19th meeting?
No, the May 5th meeting.
Here's the problem, I, I think the, Bernie, and correct me if I'm wrong, the current emergency, state of emergency executive order that we're under expires on April 30th. Is that the issue?
Well, it's the local executive.
We have to.
Correct. That's correct. So, it does need to be extended, and we're not gonna meet until?
May 5th.
Well, unless we, unless we can discuss, unless we can dig on it next Tuesday in a workshop.
Which you want to be prudent with, you know.
Okay, let's, can we do that then? So, if we need to, if we need to make an official vote, can we just do that on, add that to the agenda for Tuesday's budget workshop?
Absolutely.
All right, let's, that's my suggestion. If anybody disagrees, then, does that work for you, Bernie, if we do that, if we do it on Tuesday?
Is there a reason that a motion should not be appropriate to extend it to a certain date so that the executive order would correspond with a council action?
Because your agenda item says fourth supplemental emergency declaration, declaration of state of emergency extension. It does not indicate what the particulars are regarding your extension. So, if the agenda item was clear related to the 6th, 4th date, I would say, yes, take a vote on it tonight. However, if you don't do anything, you're still covered by the West Warren State of Emergency Declaration until April 3rd. You're covered by the state's declaration of emergency until May 15th. If you want to vote on it and not be, go astray of the Open Meetings Act, I would follow what Councilman Messier said, just putting on the agenda for your workshop next Tuesday, and then have the council vote on it. And that will take care of everything without causing any more confusion.
Okay.
There you go, Mary Ann?
Got it, I already wrote it. I'll, we'll work it out during the week. I have it down here, that's gonna be on the next agenda. It's gonna be on the Tuesday agenda. We'll work it out with Paula during the week. You're all set, it'll be on the agenda.
But make sure all the specifics are in the agenda item.
I'll re-listen to this tomorrow. Jay, we'll talk to Paula between now and Thursday or Friday, when I post, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna put a star next to it to make sure we get that right. Good? Yard Waste, sponsored by Council President Goslin.
I know this is gonna be a hot topic, probably a long discussion. We don't really need to make it a long discussion. I just want to touch on a few bases with Bernie. I'm not sure if Don is on tonight, but Bernie, I just want to go over a couple of things. And just to clarify a lot, because this has been the hottest topic in the past two weeks in the Town of West Warren. And due to a great winter, and now people being home 24/7, and panicking outside. When I look at the town website, the town website says Yard Waste will be suspended as of 4/27 due to a shortage of staff. That's number one. Number two, you had said when this all first started, you brought it up at a council meeting, you said that this was going to be, Yard Waste Bulk mattresses were going to be frozen. Now, it halted at that time. Understandable, we all were very understanding about that. We heard it loud and clear at a council meeting. We, as council members, have been taking calls, social media, and whatever, and letting them know it's being suspended. Now, our DPW department, um, has sent out either emails to residents and I, I copied on one of them that we're gonna be doing yard waste on April thirteenth. Uh, also, phone calls were made, we were told that they were gonna pick them on the thirteenth. Um, we were accepting money for mattresses and whatever, um, unfortunately, and they're still on the road. Um, so I just, and I think the council, and I, I checked into other communities and Coventry and Warwick are both not picking up yard waste at this point, which is totally understandable. But they also sent letters to their residents to let them know that we're not picking up yard waste. Please remove it from the curb, put it in your yard. We haven't done any of that, so we've had so much mixed information out there as whether or not we're picking up yard waste or we're not picking up yard waste. Then I was told we weren't picking up yard waste due to the staggered schedules, which is understandable. Now, I'm being told as of yesterday, staggered schedules for DPW is more longer in effect starting next week. Now, I don't, I don't have anything to say on that. I got that from word of mouth throughout the town. Is yard waste going to be picked up or not going to be picked up, and if it is, when will it be picked up?
Council President, uh, I believe Don is on, I'm unmuteing him.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yes.
Hi. Um, let me try to address some of the, uh, confusion. Um, we were, we had two crews working, um, all through, uh, February and March. And the intent was to get the street sweeping done, yeah, that was one crew, and to get New London Avenue done. Can you see me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and we were humming right along. In fact, the street sweeping, by the end of this week, we will be completed. Everything north of Coas- uh, Coasette, or however you pronounce it, Avenue North. Uh, basically Ward five will be the only thing that's left on street sweeping, and we hope to get that done within a week or two into May. The, uh, New London Avenue project was screaming right along, and then we went to the, uh, we got cut in half with our hours. So we turned around and all of a sudden, what would have taken us one more week to finish up has taken us, we're now working on the third week because we only had two full days. And you really can't do a half a day work. That's a construction project, and you really need to be out there a full day and sometimes a little overtime. And we were unable to do that, and the weather turned out to be really crappy. Uh, we've had some real severe weather. Um, so that being said, we're still working on New London Avenue. The intent was to have New London Avenue done by the thirteenth, and we were well on our way until we got the restrictions because of the virus. That being said, I think we're gonna finish up the binder on New London Avenue come, um, Thursday. And I will have two, I did have a crew out today picking up yard waste, and we did pick up, we had seven stops for mattresses, and we got all seven picked up today. So the mattresses are clean right now. Most of the metal is clean right now. And we plan on hitting yard waste the next two days with at least one, if not two crews. But there is a complication on this, and the complication is I really shouldn't have two guys in a truck at the same time. Again, social distancing. So we're, we're trying to accommodate that. Normally you'd have three or four people working on a crew. We're down to two people, maybe three, if the foreman drops a, a labor off that he can walk, uh, between different sites or ride on the back of the truck, which is not overly advisable, but it, it's done. So we are going to make an attempt to do it. We're going to do it differently than what you've done in the past because I can't tell you that we're going to be on Elm Street on Thursday. So what we're going to do is very similar to what we've been doing with this street sweeping. We're putting a map up in the office and we're going to make a complete sweep through the entire town. Maybe a complete sweep twice through the entire town and then try to figure out where we're at. Now, that'll probably take us to the end of May, and with Megga taking over the first of July, I don't think we'll get into a scheduled yard waste, but we'll turn around and do it that way, and I think we'll get the bulk of it. And I also want to say.
Can I interrupt for a minute? I interrupted, but what happened, so like, for example, in Nottingham, I took a drive through Nottingham yesterday. People have bags out, like some people ten, twenty bags, or, you know, some people elderly, they don't have the ability to take the bags to the DPW yard.
Yep.
Are they gonna have to wait, like, a month?
We're going to pick them up. They may have to wait, but I'm also gonna be honest with you. A lot of those bags were put out in January, uh, in February. Uh, we've had an open winter, so people will start putting yard waste out, uh, in the middle of the winter.
I received a number of calls and emails over the last couple of weeks because of the warm weather that we've had, you know, here and there.
Yep.
And, you know, now we have the heavy rain and everything else, so people are getting frustrated, and I, I know you get that, but, you know, I wanna be able to give answers, like timelines, like, okay, by such and such a date, this will be taken care of.
Or, or like, or like, street sweeping where you know, like, hey, you're starting in Ward one and you're moving down? Because I think there's so much confusion where I didn't even know that you had started picking up yard waste. So when people have asked me now, I told them not to put it on the corner. So if you pass by the area, some of these people may have already pulled it back in and, and missed it. So even if, if you could send the council a timeline of, hey, we're starting in this area.
What I will do, if you don't mind, I will send out a code red and identify the areas that we're going to pick up before we get out there.
That's a great idea.
Okay. Uh, again, I just, there's so much uncertainty. There's just no way that I can tie this into a particular schedule like you had last year.
No, that make, and that, and that totally makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, understand, last year I had four more employees than I have today. So, you know, it, it just continues to ratchet down. I'm delighted that you've signed the contract and you guys are ready to move. Maybe I can start filling some of these vacant positions. But when you're talking of a department of twenty-nine people and you've got eleven vacancies, uh, and you're, you're trying to restrict overtime, it's extremely difficult to get the same amount of work done that you were getting with twenty-nine employees.
And that's understandable.
Okay.
Um, I just wanna, before we go any further, Don, I understand it, it has been very, uh, stressful over there and shorthanded and everything that's going on. Um, somebody's typing, I don't know who is, but, um, I just, first of all, I think Councilman Latati dropped off by accident, so he's not on the gallery. Um, second, I, I, Don, I totally understand, you know, we're talking about yard waste and the only thing I had a concern with is if we had, um, communicated this properly.
Yep.
Our website had three different scenarios on it. One was COVID nineteen, which is in the COVID nineteen portion. Then another section says four twenty-seven, we're halting due to being shorthanded. Um, again, it's just mass confusion. Also, on social media, we had officers saying one thing, town employees saying another, and it just.
I just ended up having somebody come pick up mine for me because I didn't, I didn't wanna wait and leave it out there, because I didn't wanna have leaves all over the street there.
And I, and I do agree with you, and, and I'll, I'll take that hit. We really wanted to get this done. We really wanted to not say we couldn't do it. And had we not had the half-day schedule, I would have had a full-time crew on it starting on the thirteenth as we planned. But as soon as you went into the half-day schedule, the weather turned south, we just couldn't get New London done. And, uh, by the way, New London's working beautifully. I don't know if you guys noticed it, but we do have it. It, it is, it is doing exactly what we expected it to do. So we just need to finish that up so we can just, just crew off from that and on to this right here.
No, and, and again, Don, we know when you first walked in the door here in the town of West Wall, we knew London was the hottest topic due to the winter coming in and, you know, the dangers that it brings. So I, I understand and commend you for getting that done and the, and the crews. I mean, I, I know it's been very difficult, shorthanded.
Crew's been fantastic. Both crews have been fantastic.
The only, the only concern that is, as council members, is, is it, is yard waste getting done? Yes or no? And, you know, just wanna be on the same page. Also, um.
Yes. It is getting done, and we will do a code red so people have a better understanding where it's being done.
Don, in addition to the code red, can you update the DPW websites when people go there? Because a lot of people have said they've had, you know, trouble getting through to DPW, so at least they can see where you are if they don't have access to code red.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Not a problem.
In addition to yard waste, um, which goes hand in hand with this, the street sweeping, I noticed last week, um, the sweeper is in, uh, beginning in my ward and Ward four. Where, where do we stand with that, Don?
As I said earlier, we, uh, by the end of this week, we will have everything north of Coasette, uh, Avenue completed with the exception of Wakefield Street, which is a different animal all in to itself. But we'll have everything north of Coasette completed with Ward five being basically the last thing to do. And I think we'll get that completed in two to three weeks.
Don, if you can give me a call tomorrow, because I think we missed a little section of, a lot of section of Phoenix also. And I know this because I'm walking the streets every day for my daily exercise, and I can tell you right now, the whole section's been missed if we, if we did.
Okay, and you're, and which council, I'm sorry?
Ward two, Dave Goslin.
Dave, okay.
I know you're on the phone, it's hot, though.
Yep.
And, 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 Don, when, when will Wakefield Street be done?
Uh, we were trying to get it this week or next week. Uh, it's normally done at nighttime, uh, because of the traffic. Uh, however, we're trying not to use overtime. We're trying to do it during the day. The issue with it is you have to clean the sidewalks on Wakefield Street, or at least one of the issues. And when you go and you bring the broom up there, uh, on the, uh, bogcat, it just makes a dust storm. So we're still trying to figure out the best way of doing that.
Okay, I mean with.
Probably next week.
With the school not in session, with the schools not in session, the traffic is, is quite a bit, um.
It, it is less.
Lessened, but yeah, sure. Yeah.
It, it is less, and we think we can do it during the day.
Thank you.
Okay.
I apologize. I was, somehow something happens. I'm on a different computer. I'm not gonna ask you to recap the yard waste. A couple of quick questions, which you probably already said. Are we, are we picking up yard waste?
Yes.
We are, but we're not doing it under your old system. We're going to do it like we've been doing the street sweeping. We're gonna utilize code red, and we started today. We actually had a crew out there today till it started downpouring. And we'll have a crew out there tomorrow and Thursday.
So pe- people have been calling me, asking me if they should keep their yard waste out, put their yard waste out, or keep it in their yards? Can I tell them to put it out like normal?
I would tell them to put it out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Public comment. Designated portion of town council's open meeting for citizens to address comments to the town council relating to matters affecting the public business, Rhode Island general law forty-two dash forty-six dash two-three and Rhode Island general law forty-two dash forty-six dash two-six. Comments will only be addressed to the town council who will take them under advisement. When addressing the town council, please state your name and address. Please conduct yourself in an orderly and respectful fashion. The comments of citizens accessing this portion of our meeting are neither adopted nor endorsed by this body but heard as requested. Members of the town council being the duly elected public body as identified in Rhode Island general law forty-two dash forty-six dash two-three have no obligation to respond to the public comments.
Is there any public comment? Please raise your hand. On your computer, that is. Don't raise it in your living room.
Make sure to state your name and address, Dave.
Um, I have, I don't see anybody raising their hand on the attendees side. I'll check the panelists side. I do not see anything near. Um, I just wanna point out something to the town council, and I know, uh, Karen Terris Savage is here. Um, there's gonna be three or four signs that are going to, I do see a hand, and I'll give you one second. Um, where'd he go? Oop, hand went down. Um, just, there's gonna be three or four signs erected, um, and I'll send out a picture to the council and to the town manager, um, thanking and encouraging the graduates of twenty-twenty. Um, it's gonna be some parents who actually paid for it. Um, they are town signs, and so they'll be in, uh, three or four locations throughout town property, um, again, recognizing the, um, the graduates of twenty-twenty. Obviously, it's, it's a, uh, very tough time for the students of West Wall. You know, it's, they've, they've had a lot of evolution of twelve years of thirteen years of going to school and having a, sort of, graduation and no prom. Um, obviously, you just bought senior events, uh, all that stuff. And, um, they reached out to me today and I, I, I told them absolutely, um, they should be able to do something like that. And. Was an accident, so the hand raising was an accident. Um, let me just make sure, no public comment. I do not see any public comment, so.
Uh, make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
All right, everybody be safe. Hold on one second, a chat came in. I don't know.
Kristen, I'll talk to you tomorrow about the, um, uh, we'll talk tomorrow.
Mary Ann, hold on one second. I have someone typing, but I need, I need them to speak. Uh, hold on one second. I'm calling on Brian.
Man?
Uh, I thought it just says Brian, actually, where do you go? Um, I have somebody, the Brian and Ben.
Brian and Ben are on the screen. Unmute Brian and Ben. Brian, unmute.
He's typing in the chat room. It says, I would like to donate something to the town. I'm not sure. It just says Brian, though it doesn't say first.
Okay.
No, it doesn't, it has first name.
We will need that.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, Brian, what's?
Yes, yes.
No, you're not Brian. Who are you, Ben?
This is Dawn.
That's Dawn.
This is Dawn, who, yeah, you unmuted me.
Okay, okay, we're, Brian to all panelists, I am offering a hundred dollars to a charity of the town council's choice.
I don't feel comfortable picking a charity.
Well, let's have him put it to a charity, to the seniors under or something.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Wait.
Hold on. If, if Brian wants to make a donation to the town, I would suggest that he send an email to the clerk tomorrow outlining what is, what he wants to do, and then it can be put on the town council's agenda to see if the council wants to send it to its own, uh, you know, charitable organization. I wouldn't, I wouldn't do it just right, I mean, you can't do it right now. Just tell them, tell them, send an email to the town outlining, outlining what he wants to do, and then the council can address it. I'm sure he can hear us. It's just that he is not speaking.
Yes. And thank you for your generosity.
Exactly. Look forward to talking to you tomorrow, Brian.
All right, I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'll take, uh, I'm gonna take a all in favor on this one.
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody be safe and have a good night.
Stay healthy. Thank, thank you.
Tomorrow, Kristen. Bye.
Bye.
Live on YouTube, guys. Live on YouTube, guys.
Hello? Okay. Yeah, so I'm like, all right, thanks. So I actually was getting feedback. The speakers in here were too loud.